Well, good evening. Call to order tonight's regularly scheduled meeting of the Bothell Planning Commission for Wednesday, May 21st, 2014. Note that all commissioners are present with the exception of Patrick Cabe and Michael Stahl, who are both excused this evening. Open up the floor to any non-agenda public comments, folks in the room that would like to speak to items that are not on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll move forward. No approval of minutes this evening. We do have new business, though, and that will be the election of officers. It's that time in our cycle where we will nominate and elect chairman, positions for chairman, vice chairman, and secretary. There is a slate of candidates that have asked to be nominated for the positions. Those include Blake Stedman for secretary, Mike Stahl for vice chair, and welcome Patrick Cabe, and Steve Booth for chairman. Those are the only nominations received so far, so I will take a motion on any additional nominations for officers.
So I just move that we accept those people that have came forward for the positions of chair, vice chair, and secretary.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of closing the nominations?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes unanimously with those present tonight. With nominations in place, I will accept a motion to vote for the nominees. The full slate, all three positions on one ballot.
I move that we vote for the position of chairman, Steve Booth for vice chair, Mike Stahl, and for secretary, Blake Stedman.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Note that the nominees are elected unanimously by the presence of, by those commissioners that are present tonight and will effectively take their positions as chair, vice chair, and secretary beginning next week. Moving on with the continued public hearing on the 2015 periodic plan and code update. Tonight, we will be starting with the initial review of the transportation element, and we'll turn it over to staff for their presentation.
All right. Thank you very much. Sherman Gong here, city transportation planner. I'd like to start off tonight's hearing with a brief initial review of the transportation element and proposed outline of the remaining sections that will be brought forward at a future meetings. You can see there's no, nobody in the audience that needs to, we can kind of go through this initial requirements slide that you guys have already been familiar with in previous meetings, as well as the process that we're going through right now to update the comprehensive plan. At this time, I want to just go over what we have in hand. These are the sections that we've already covered, including the vision statement, annexation element, parks, recreation, open space element, natural environment element, utilities, historic preservation, and community services. So those have all been completed, and you should have those in the back of your packets or as you continue to keep, keep those sections completed. So for in review at this time, we're coming back tonight later with the economic development element for its second review, the transportation element for its first review, and the urban design element for its first review, initial review, too. Transportation element is a required element under the GMA, and the required elements, components for that that need to be included in the transportation element include the land use assumptions to estimate the future traffic forecast, impacts to state-owned transportation facilities based on the land use assignments that we will review it to operate and the travel model and update that with. Facilities and service needs, which include the facilities inventory for any air, rail, ground, transportation, transit facilities that we have in city now. It will include level service standards that would be used to monitor performance of the city streets and our operating transportation modes. Regional facility coordination, which will occur with the county, regional planning authorities, and the transit plans. Level service compliance plans, which are, which will outline the action items to maintain level service standards. Ten-year traffic forecast, which is the minimum requirement, feature forecast year, but we will be looking at a 20-year forecast when we do our travel model update. And the system improvements, which will be identified to meet the future demand in, in a general sense. The finance plan and program, which will be the basis for developing the six-year tip. Intergovernmental coordination with adjacent cities, just an assessment of impacts of our plans and the land use assignments, and what those impacts are to adjacent jurisdictions. And finally, the transportation demand management strategies, which are to identify ways to reduce the travel demand and encourage non-auto mode, non-auto transportation modes. For regional agency coordination with the city of Bothell, we are going to be working and looking at Washington State Department of Transportation plans, the PSRC plans, reviewing King and Snohomish County programs and where they are with their update. The cities in the, I currently identified in the existing transportation element include the cities of Kirkland, Kenmore, Woodinville, and Mill Creek. Transit agencies, including King County Metro, Community Transit, and Sound Transit. The University of Washington-Bothell and Cascadia Community College will also be touching base with them on any plans as a pretty major player in the city now, and just to include them, being that they weren't so much, you know, back in the original document. And anything that comes up with the Eastside Transportation Partnership. The transportation element sections include these basic five sections, which is the background and relationship to the GMA sections, and the regional transportation setting, the local setting, and the finance, and the goals and policies and actions sections, pretty standard in our, in all of the elements. But because of the complexity and the amount of information that is in this element, we are proposing this schedule to bring forth to you. Tonight, we're going to be talking about the background and the regional transportation setting information, which is what you should have in your edited packet for discussion. And then in the June 4th meeting, I'll bring the bicycle, pedestrian, and public transit sections. This will give us some time. We just approved a contract yesterday night with the transportation consultant that we have onboard is Farr and Pierce, and they'll be working with us to prepare the transportation demand model update. In the July 2nd meeting, we'll just review the goals, policies, and actions of the transportation element. And that's, this will also give us time to get the model updated. This is, there's quite a process in that involved with that, and we look to bring the local transportation setting, which is the meat and potatoes of the whole element there in terms of looking at local, the local land use assignments and some very, and the base, the base case proposed land use actions that we will look at for the base model, and come up with some recommendations for you to make any adjustments to that, and hopefully bring that at July 23rd. And then the final, the final section to be determined in September will be the finance package after we complete the recommendation section and whatnot, and, and then further on any of the sub-area, you know, final, final changes in the sub areas that we have to look at at that point. So at this time, we will accept any public testimony there or none here, so we can discuss any of the changes and edits that we have, that you have forth in your, in your package there. And continue the, and then continue the rest of the hearing and make a move, move to continue this element in June 4th meeting. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Sherman.
Uh huh.
I appreciate the presentation. Open it up for either specific comments relative to the presentation, clarification points, and then we can follow by any specific comments or deliberation regarding the package in front of us.
Just, I have a question. The, is it the July 23rd when you bring us, the, they'll show us like how our, how, how our whole system is functioning on a, on a grade level, or used to do it as far as we have, we're gonna have a failure here, no matter what we do, this road's gonna fail, or we, or it's gonna, you know, what are, what we have a closer, like a more detailed look, is that what the July 23rd is gonna tell us?
Exactly. The local transportation setting section is the, I mean, is a pretty big section in the element, and it does outline existing conditions, what, what the current existing conditions are. We're gonna update that. We're through the, we're, we're collecting traffic counts and updating to get to a 2015, year 2015 base scenario, and what that basically will, will set as the existing level of service of, you know, local road, or all our road systems and our corridors right now. We'll, at that time, also look at a sort of the, the proposed land use scenarios that we are going to be inputting into the model to see where that base, that base future scenario will be. There are gonna be, we, there are gonna be some sub-area changes, so those will come later, but just to get us to, Pat, I think what you're exactly saying is, you know, what is going to be the existing future, the existing level of service being year 2015, and then what is the base future scenario in 2035?
Just a kind of general question, are you guys, do you guys have an outside traffic consultant helping you? Because that's a lot of information, I'm just curious.
Yes, the, we just don't have the capacity to run, you know, to, and, and to run the transportation model, so we have, the traffic consultant we are using is Farr and Pierce. They've, they were, they were the consultant who helped us do, helped us do the last update, and they've also been onboard for previous concurrency and traffic impact mitigation type of updates, if you will, for, for what we're using right now, and they, yeah, they're, they're who we selected on to, to help us do this, and they were approved for contract last night.
And so do they think they can make this, like, the only reason I ask is last time we approved the downtown master plan with not having the, we didn't actually get, I don't, we didn't actually get a look at the transportation because it just couldn't get there in time, so for us to approve before we sent it to council, I was just curious.
Yeah, that's, that's the target date. We, we selected them because they do have, Farr and Pierce is working on Snohomish County's model right now, they're working with the city of Kenmore, they, they are working with many of the adjacent jurisdictions, and they're actually ahead of us a little bit, and so based on that experience with them, we feel that they, they could provide what we need by this, you know, by this time. And of course, that again is just to, to get us to a base scenario.
Right.
And then, and then, you know, any, and then we'll have to look at, you know, any modifications that you, that you guys will have, or if we find out any major, you know, problems that we have with that base scenario, then we have, we'll have time to have, come back to that later.
Okay. Thank you.
I had a, just real quick question. Thank you, Sherman, great presentation. So I want to support your timeline. I think that's fine with me, and so what you're proposing really for this evening is transportation is just those top two line items would be that we've discussed today.
That's correct. That's the only, that, those are the sections that we, we could move forward with pretty easily, and, you know, there's, that's, those are the sections that we have edited there that you have in your packet.
Okay. That's all I have at this point, just wanted to clarify the timeline.
Thank you. Other, other questions or comments?
Yeah, that's right. Just a quick comment. You answered in your presentation, Sherman, but I'm just glad that we're looking forward and not going to the minimum 10 years as far as population growth with our modeling. Reading through the packet, I might have missed it, but it seemed like it was more focused. It mentioned the six-year plan quite often, and then the 10-year minimum, but yeah, I'm glad to hear that we're looking forward and trying to encompass future demand in our infrastructure projects.
Yeah, absolutely. That, that the GMA just requires a 10-year as a minimum forecast year, but for the most part, every jurisdiction goes a 20-year to coordinate, and that coordinates with PSRC's vision, Vision 2040 program, and, you know, the regional, the regional authorities, planning authorities, so.
Sherman, one thing I, I guess I, I'm, I'm looking for trying to understand where it fits within the, the elements for review, or whether it's something we need to talk about tonight. We recently went through the natural environment and element, which includes an air quality and greenhouse gas section, and a lot of our discussion through that deliberation and review of that section of the plan revolved around decisions, goals, and actions that affect or are affected by the transportation decisions. Is there somewhere, either in this front-end matter or somewhere through the process, that we'll be looking at somehow ensuring that we're aligning the natural environment and air quality, greenhouse gas elements of the plan with some of the comments provided there that apply to the transportation section?
I think there is, yeah, I agree, there is a connection between those two elements, and I definitely will coordinate with Bill, and when we, when we work through those, as far as, I think it's going to come out in the land use, you know, where we're, it's going to basically, where it's gonna show up is where we have level of service issues and any congestion will, that's where you're gonna be having anything, have any measurable, you know, I think any measurable factors that can be coordinated between those two elements.
So would we be seeing that in our discussion of transportation goals, policies, and actions, or is that something that would fall under local transportation setting, or?
I think to define where we are with that, and if there are any critical impacts to those, those other elements, it will come out in the local transportation setting.
Thank you.
And we can go back, we can go back, and, you know, when we have the final, final, final reviews to review our goals, policies, if anything does show up through that.
That, that would be great, and I guess, David, if there's an opportunity to make sure that we've got some coordination with Bruce Blackburn when we get to the July 23rd session, to ensure that those previous natural environment comments that were brought up, I know Commissioner Stahl, who's not here tonight, was very strong with some of the thoughts and feelings that he had, and there were a lot of comments around that that I think we deferred to the transportation element. Thank you. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Eric? I have a quick question about the Snohomish River Trail or Burt Gilman Trail, I'm not sure what it's called in the city of Bothell.
Snohomish River Trail.
Snohomish River Trail. I'm curious to know kind of who, who is overall responsible for that trail from, kind of from start to finish, is it by jurisdiction that it passes through and it becomes a park of that particular jurisdiction, or is there some overall body that's kind of looking out for the, the overall trail? And how does that fit into the transportation plan, I guess?
Well, it's definitely a, a part of our, it's, we're, we're definitely gonna look at that as a part of our pedestrian, our non-motorized network, Eric, and, but the trail itself is actually maintained by King County. So that, you know, any, any improvements or any plans for, for enhancing that trail, or, you know, anything that we may want to propose, will have to go through King County for approval.
So, so the city of Bothell make a specific proposal for maintenance or repairs or new trail sections, and is that part of, is that something that needs to be reflected in the comprehensive plan, or is that something that's part of kind of the city's regular business?
Well, I think if there's anything that, I think if there's anything that we, that we vet out during this process for the pedestrian, for the pedestrian or bicycle element, elements in this, in this section, we'll, you know, we'll have to bring that, we'll want to bring that forward, and if it's any specific improvements to assure a level of service of, you know, for, for those non-motorized uses, then we want to bring that up. We could, we can bring that up here. I think that would be a good idea, and then, and King County would recognize that, and there would have to be coordination between the two of us so that their program and their transportation element also matches with ours, or ours match, you know, either way, vice versa.
Okay. Thank you.
So moving forward to specific comments regarding the edits to the background relationship to GMA and the regional transportation setting sections that have been provided to us tonight?
So with regards to the page TR1 and TR2, this is the purpose and relationship to the GMA, I'd like to start off with kind of a focus on metrics, and that would be page TR2. On B and C, Sherman, you talk about level of service, and B is level of service for locally-owned arterials, and C is level of standards for state highways. Can you take me through a little bit of how those, what the metrics are for those levels of service, and are they the same, different, how are they, how do they differ in terms of local arterials as well as our state highways that go through our city?
So specifically level ser, our levels, the city's level of service standard is a, is a corridor-based level of service, and that is measured by averaging, averaging the level of service for each intersection and the delay that's occurring at those intersections.
So the, so the service level, is it a, is it a volume metric, or is it a time metric? How many, number of cars per second, per minute, or?
It's based on delay, vehicle delay, so it's time-based is how level service is measured. Obviously, that, that level of service is a function of volume and, and, and speeds, I mean, number, you know, capacity, really.
Okay.
It's really based on volume capacity, so, but ultimately, the delay is what is used to define the level of service at each intersection along a specific corridor, say, for example, 228 Street. Each signalized intersection along that corridor will have a specific delay based on, you know, the, the congestion and whatnot there, and then the delay at each intersection is averaged across to come up with a overall delay, if you will, and then that defines, depending on where that delay lies, is where it defines us whether a level of service A, B, or C, you know, to F. And generally, that's the standard that is typically used for, across the board for, for every jurisdiction, not corridor-based, but at least starting point is an intersection level of service. And state would use that, for example, for their facilities, they're, they're based on that, but each jurisdiction can obviously adopt their own method of evaluating level of service when it comes to, say, new development or feature, the feature, you know, the future land use that we're gonna be looking at. So that's kind of where, that's, that's kind of how our level of service is measured for vehicle tra, vehicular traffic.
So if I could just probe on that just a little bit more, so there's, there's kind of a level of service around intersections and the performance of intersections, but then you also mentioned corridors, so that's like?
Corridor being the average, like I was, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, got it. And is there funding that comes to achieve a certain level of performance, particularly I'm thinking of like our state highways? So if they have a certain level, you know, state highway that goes through an intersection, like I'm thinking of like 524 up at the Thracher's Corner, and there's a certain performance level at an, at an intersection or the full corridor of 524 through our city, if we're not achieving a certain level, is there then funding that comes for us to go back in and retrofit, or to make changes or expansion to then, then achieve a certain performance level?
So level service will be a measure to help grade the application for those funding. That's something, obviously, it would raise your priority if your level of service is more, you know, you know, more ready to fail, so to speak, than another corridor, another jurisdiction is competing with you for those same, for that same funding, for example. And again, it can be, once it's at level of service F at a failure, then there's even, you know, there's even ways to measure beyond that, and to grade, to grade one corridor, for example, or one intersection between jurisdictions, and then it's just a big, then you have to look at other, other elements of that corridor outside of the capacity issue being safety concerns, or, you know, future connectivity, there's, you know, a lot of different other elements outside of just level of service that is used to grade projects and rank them, so to speak, for, you know, to assign funding.
Shifting, kind of staying with the idea of, of metrics, but just, I think, as I've read through the transportation plan, there's kind of an overall theme that says we want to move from one that's just an automobile-based transportation strategy to one that includes bicycles, public transportation, even pedestrians. And in your expertise in transportation, is there, are there metrics that we can put to, to begin to measure, you know, the usage of our bike lanes, for example, or how much public transportation is being used, or even pedestrian traffic? Is there, are there ways that we can see if we're achieving what our goals are in that regard?
For, when you start talking about another way to measure level of service incorporating those other modes of travel, there are, there are some jurisdictions that are trying to undertake that right now, but it's a, it's a pretty, it's a lengthy and costly, you know, process to change to that type of a multi, multi-use level of service, if you will.
Yeah. That's kind of where I'm headed.
Yeah. And again, it's, it's not real common, I mean, not real common yet, but there are some jurisdictions that have had, you know, that are trying to incorporate that. I don't think at, with the, the schedule that we have to complete this by next June that we can, it's a, it's a philosophical change that you would have to review, and you would have to see how that would either, you know, benefit the city to, to, to move to that type of, to move to that type of a program and measure of concurrency, for example. So there are ways to do that, but I think at this point, we're just not ready to undertake that change because it's just a, it would be a whole, it would, it would take, it would take some effort and, and, and effectively some more financing to, to move to that type of a multi-level, level service.
Understood, that if, that it'd be easy to strategically head that direction, but the details of actually making it happen might be pretty complex, and that putting in place different measuring systems, et cetera, I understand that.
Right. Right.
But I would like to, if there's a way that we can at least kind of head that way in our language and in our thinking, so that, because I firmly believe that if, if, if we want to achieve something, we first need to measure where we are, and then be able to measure where we're going. And so I guess I would just encourage us to, um, enter into the, to being one of those jurisdictions that, um, and, and, and I'm of the thought, really, that I, I, I'm not necessarily saying I want this to be, Bothell to be a prescriptive city that is opposed to the automobile and in favor of, we want everybody to be on bicycles or whatever, but I am in favor of options for our citizens, for, uh, a citizen to consider whether or not, you know, whether they're going to get in their car out of their driveway, or hop on their bike and head, head to do what they want to do, that that's, I want to give them options.
And I think, uh, I think the, our policies, our, our current policies already kind of are driven in that direction to encourage those kind of, you know, encourage more walking, pedestrian, uh, all of our downtown improvements right now, for example, they're all, they're all based on people, uh, you know, being able to walk around a lot easier and just more pedestrian-friendly, for that matter, you know? So in that situ, you know, it's, it is, it is kind of in our, it is in our policies to, to encourage that, and always will be, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, and I'll wrap up my questions here, but I think you could even, I don't think it'd be much of a stretch to even say this is almost be part of like the healthcare of our citizens, that, you know, whether it's the trail as, uh, as Eric brought up, or our bike lanes or sidewalks, it's, it's not just good for transportation flow and, and timing, but also the health of our citizens, as well as the safety of our citizens, so.
Yeah, absolutely. They, for example, the pedestrian and bike sections that will be coming, we're looking at, we're going to be looking at connectivity, for example, and, and where the gaps are in those facilities for walking, or, or bike, or bike, bike paths, and, and, and those things that do encourage, uh, you know, easier commute, if you will, to do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other specific comments regarding the, um, edits? Eric?
I have a couple, couple of quick things. The first thing is, I, it's not a specific comment, it's more of a general comment, and it might even apply to other sections of the comprehensive plan, but has there been any discussion about, um, possibly making this, enhancing the readability of the document by incorporating some of these figures that tend to be at the back of the section into the body of the section, so that when a reader's looking at this, they don't have to flip back to an eight, 11 by 17 sheet at the back, but could instead possibly see that within the body of the material as they read?
We have discussed that, and, uh, there is, um, we're hoping to be able to, once we've, you know, gotten through the, uh, the wordsmithing of the document and, and identifying the figures, to be able to, uh, make it a more reader-friendly and also a more online, um, friendly, uh, document. But that's, we, we need to get through the, the hard work of going through the, the text and, and determining the graphics, and then, and then we'll, we'll try to tackle that.
I totally agree. I think, I, I'm glad that you guys are thinking about that, because, you know, as a, somebody as a, as a citizen that's read this before, I find that it is a little bit hard to, to get back and forth, because, you know, I tend to be able to process things better if I can see the figures, I'm reading it, and kind of refer back and forth. And I think, obviously, one of the goals of this thing is to make it as readable as possible, and as, as, um, you know, as, as available to people as possible. In other words, encouraging them to, to want to read it. So thanks for that. And then, uh, second question, on sheet TR two and the top of TR three, and also on TR five, there's some discussion about kind of some of the achievements that Bothell's made, and, and some of the stuff is deleted, and then, uh, it looks like, you know, the things that have been achieved are being deleted from the plan. Is the, where in the plan do the, do the new things that, you know, the, those things that are, the things in the future are going to be placed? Is that in this section? Is that just in the TIP, or where does that show up?
Okay, so the, the descriptions, for example, here that are, were removed are, are projects that are being, will be, should be completely, they're under process right now, and pretty close to being completed, and will be completed by, by the time we adopt the, the plan next year. So we're, we're just, you know, that's just excessive and, uh, language that we don't need in there. Future, for future projects, those will be in the local transportation setting section under, uh, under, under the, uh, recommendation section for any, any new improvements outside of what's already been identified. And, uh, those will be where, you know, any other projects that we have, you know, capacity improvements, or, or other plans that, that I think you're talking about right now.
Okay. And then those recommendations, are they mainly coming from the consultant that's doing the modeling and that sort of thing? Is that, are you're identifying level of service issues, and they're bringing those to you, or?
What will happen is they will identify, they'll complete a, uh, the sign, the traffic assignment, and then they will conduct a level ser, the analysis, level service analysis for us, for each of our corridors. And based on what the results are from those, we will, um, examine if, and develop any additional capacity improvements, uh, new roads that may or may not be, you know, may need, be needed to help alleviate certain corridors that are going to be under, you know, a lot of pressure with any added land use than we have right now. And any future growth, obviously, that's just background, not even occurring within the city, but, um, you know, any, just Snohomish County, for example, any, any traffic that's entering through and passing through the city is going to affect, you know, future level of service, background growth. So, um, any, any projects that they bring forward, they may recommend something, you know, a, a spot improvement, uh, intersection add a lane here, a turn lane, or something like that. But any major new connections will definitely come from, from staff and, and, uh, you know, to determine if that's going to be a.
And, and all of that would be done in a timeframe to be reflected in the, in this version of the comprehensive plan?
For, yeah, exactly. For, for the base land use scenario, is what I'm, is the only way I can best describe it, you know, because there obviously may be some revisions, based, you know, all the, I think Bill introduced that, those different little urban centers, if you will, and, and different areas that we want to maybe look at in terms of where all this, where are we going to accommodate this 3,400, you know, units that we have to add in? And, and then at that time, we'll, uh, you know, be able to, be able to move, move things around and based on some, you know, based on your suggestions and, and everything else like that.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Mm-hmm.
Any other comments or input, uh, on the section provided tonight? So with that, uh, I guess we'd, uh, seek a motion to continue the, um, I'm sorry, Sherman, I forgot your, your recommendation, but I think you asked us to continue the review of the transportation element of the plan, uh, based on the schedule you presented, so we'd see you again on June 4th?
Uh, yes. That's right.
So, uh, seeking a motion?
Motion to continue the public hearing for the initial review of the transportation element per the timeline presented to us.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Note that the, uh, motion passes unanimously. Look forward to seeing you on June 4th, Sherman.
Thank you.
Moving down the agenda, um, next item is the initial review of the urban design element, and I'm assuming that's you, David?
That's correct. And I do have a, a short, uh, PowerPoint presentation, uh, for you. This review will be a pretty high-level, uh, review, uh, of the urban design element. I wanted to get, uh, get some of the issues out there for feedback before, uh, delving into it, uh, to a great extent, uh, so. The, okay, the purpose of the urban design element is to provide a framework for excellent development of the community, as expressed in the vision statement, and, uh, and to provide a policy basis for city design, uh, city decisions, uh, which affect urban design and, and development. It is not a required element under the Growth Management Act, but, uh, we've had in our vision statement, uh, for some time, um, a statement that says, uh, promotes a community which celebrates and respects its picturesque setting by achieving harmony between the built and natural environments, uh, among several other statements that relate to urban design. So the urban design element contains goals, policies, and actions that do promote excellent and sustainable development, uh, and that protects and enhances the community character prized by the citizens of Bothell. The, um, initial proposed changes can be summarized as follows. The, uh, definition of urban design and its purpose are refined and updated. Major planning efforts with significant urban design components that have, uh, occurred since the previous updated are added. Uh, and then the goals, policies, and actions are updated. So some basic issues that, or broad issues that, um, that I'd like to bring to your attention and for your discussion tonight are, uh, the boulevard system. Figure UD one, uh, was modified in 2009. Uh, previous versions had, uh, additional detail actually identifying, uh, the pallet of, of, uh, street trees on the, um, various boulevards. And so we would like to ask the commission, uh, whether they want to consider adding any of that detail back, uh, and whether to consider code amendments, uh, implementing the policy. Uh, and one reason for that is that, uh, we've experienced, uh, that the, the current code for boulevards, uh, is, it sets aside a, a fairly lofty goal of boulevards with 10-foot wide, uh, planting strips throughout the city, but more often than not, uh, our capital improvement projects wind up deviating from those standards just because of the right-of-way costs are too severe, or the impacts on adjacent development are too severe. So, um, as we get into this element in the comprehensive plan, we may also want to make some recommendations for, uh, some changes, uh, to the, to the development regulations. I also have included in the packet and in the presentation tonight, uh, four or five, uh, illustrations, figures that, uh, that, um, flesh out the boulevard and, and actually include, also include this, uh, illustration related to the entry at Thrasher's Corner. And I'd like to get commissions, a sense from the commission, uh, of whether these are worth retaining. The staff recommendation is, is they probably aren't, uh, or, uh, depending on the direction we go with these amendments, um, may need, may need to be, uh, either modify, eliminated or, or modified. This is, the entry at Thrasher's Corner is at the, uh, north terminus of one of the, the boulevards, um, uh, as it exists now. And when the development happened on this, uh, the corner to the, the right in the, uh, illustration here, there was space left aside for some sort of gateway treatment, but, but the gateway was never done. So this one might actually be, uh, worth retaining, uh, perhaps with some modifications. Also, I forgot to mention on the previous slide here, I've identified, uh, on, on this element, whether we add more detail or not, uh, the previous planning, uh, extended the boulevard treatment into the, uh, potential annexation areas in King County, which are now, uh, part of the City of Bothell, but it did not, uh, do so into the Snohomish County portion. So those areas are, are circled in the, the top part of the, the image here. So that would be one recommendation, is to, to go ahead and, and show at least the concept, extending into Snohomish County, as we had previously with the King County portions. The rest of these illustrations are specific, uh, uh, streetscapes, uh, as part of this boulevard system. And this one, 228th, uh, 228th has been improved. The improvements aren't consistent with these illustrations, uh, and the illustrations actually aren't consistent with our current code. So, um, this one, uh, we, I would definitely recommend eliminating. Similarly, this one, uh, states, or is titled, uh, Streetscape on Bothell Everett Highway. It's actually on Bothell Way within the downtown subarea. And again, this, this portion, portion hasn't been improved, uh, and, uh, the downtown plan, uh, the multi-way boulevard on Bothell Way ends, uh, just a couple blocks south of this. So there is a, uh, an intent to, uh, make improvements on this section of, of, uh, of Bothell Way, but, uh, it's not clear whether, whether this, um, illustration actually shows, uh, what, what that, those intended improvements would be. This entry at Wayne Curve, uh, is another one that's been, uh, accomplished with the recent Wayne Curve improvements, uh, again, slightly different than, than what was shown here. So we would certainly, uh, suggest in eliminating this. Uh, and that, that's it for the, uh, sorry, for the, uh, boulevard improvements. The second issue I wanted to, uh, bring up for discussion is the level in de, of detail and the relevance of the illustrations in the, uh, in the urban design section. The, the policies in the urban design section are, are quite detailed for a comprehensive plan, and many of those policies have been incorporated into our development regulations. Likewise, many of the illustrations that are referred to, uh, the development regulations, uh, have adopted, uh, some of the reg, the illustrations that are referred to in this section of the comprehensive plan. Further, the, the illustrations, uh, reference documents which are, uh, have, haven't been updated themselves, and, um, so that's an open question whether, whether, what the value is of continuing, continuing to use those illustrations. I haven't made, uh, significant actual suggested edits, uh, to either the policies or the, or the, uh, illustrations, but I did want to, uh, have some discussion about that tonight. And I'm, I've incorporated these illustrations in the presentation. The illustrations are, are general. They, they show hypothetical, uh, development scenarios for, for different types of sites. And I think they still do have some validity, especially, uh, when it comes to redeveloping the office parks or other, um, uh, Greenfield or Brownfield redevelopment, uh, in, in Bothell. But I would be interested to, uh, know the, the commission's, uh, feeling about including these. Again, these, these show typical development and, uh, preferred development scenarios that, uh, take into consideration transit improvements, better pedestrian connections, which again are, are, I think, still relevant, uh, to new development in those areas. And then, uh, a third issue related to the illustrations is, uh, a proposal to, uh, explore, uh, developing a lid over 522, uh, between 101st and 102nd Avenue. This is something that got a, not a lot of discussion in the downtown plan, planning process, uh, I think predominantly because it was just seen as, as a prohibitively expensive, uh, proposition. So the question is whether this is a notion that's, that's still worth retaining as something to aspire to if, if the downtown retail. to aspire to if the downtown retail core is wildly successful. Perhaps this kind of development could be feasible in the future, and there may be some value in retaining these illustrations as something that is worth keeping in the back of our minds at least. There would have to be some changes, especially to the existing illustrations. So, the first one that I showed there was a park concept extending park space over the 522. This one, the second one shows some additional development, not directly over 522, but on the parking area adjacent to 522. And it does replace that parking with underground parking utilizing the grade difference there so that that parking could be accessible from the lower parts of 101st or 102nd. So, again, this is, it's a question of whether you think this is appropriate to put in the plan as, or is perhaps maybe too pie in the sky or possibly something that might not make sense now that we've spent a lot of money realigning 522, although I don't believe the realignment makes this, itself doesn't make this unfeasible. So, another question to the commission, are there other, are there new concepts that should be developed and illustrated similar to those, or is that really an appropriate function of the comprehensive plan? Some ideas that we have explored to some degree in the downtown plan was redevelopment of the Kaisner Park and Ride. The plan does call for relocating the east-west bus service onto 185th, which will require moving some of the parking from the Park and Ride, freeing that lot up for some development. Even if that doesn't happen, there is some possibility of redeveloping and developing over the parking area. So, that's something that could be addressed in this urban design element with or without illustrations. Similarly, a parking structure on the lot south of 183rd between 101st and 102nd is something that got some discussion. Again, it was a high-ticket item, but as downtown grows and develops and the demand increases, that might be something that we would like to lay the, some urban design groundwork for. And outside of downtown, redevelopment of the Canyon Park Park and Ride and utilizing that overpass, better utilizing that to connect across between the Canyon Park Regional Activity Center and the Canyon Park Community Activity Center may be something worth exploring a little bit further in the urban design element. So, with that, those are the main issues that I wanted to put out there for discussion tonight, open it up for questions and review of the text that I have provided in the packet. And then, feedback from the commission on any additional analysis and/or changes for the follow-up session on urban design would be appreciated. That's currently scheduled for June 11th. I did want to throw out the possibility, see if the commission would be open to shifting urban design and most likely a third review of economic development to June 18th, along with a follow-up on capital facilities, which would free up one of the four Wednesdays in June.
Thank you, David. Appreciate the presentation. It seems like there's quite a few questions on the table relative to the presentation that staff is asking us for input on. So, why don't we just start with you, Eric, and we'll work down. No need to answer all of them, but if you're interested or want to provide input on one or several, please start, and we'll just work our way across.
Thank you. Thanks, Dave. I have a couple things, actually. One is kind of a general comment about the urban design, and it's probably even more general to the plan, is I think, I think all of these things are good, having these ideas and that sort of thing, but I think blended into that needs to be a flexibility that gives, that gives the people who are actually going to build this stuff, you know, the landowners and the, you know, the contractors and that kind of thing, gives them flexibility to utilize their skills in making these things as good as they can be and not creating so many standards and so many requirements that they're hamstrung to building something that maybe doesn't work for the site. So, I think if, I guess as an overall comment, I would say I'm all for this stuff as long as there's something built in that does allow for that flexibility, some basis for staff to make their own determination or to give some leeway or to take suggestions that are made by these people and be allowed to incorporate them, provided they meet some basic criteria, I suppose. The second thing was, the one thing that caught my attention was the idea of a lid over Highway 522. I've been thinking about that for, ever since I've lived here for 15 years, and it's a neat idea. I love it. But whether or not it's feasible or not is an entirely different matter. However, I think that, I think it does have a place here because the title of our comprehensive plan is Imagine Bothell, and I can imagine Bothell with a lid over Highway 522. I don't know if that'll happen in the next 10 years or 20 years or 50 years, but I think a lot of people do picture that, and I think that it's worth probably even looking into more, considering some of the sketches that are here that would convert some space that's currently air over the top of the highway as potentially park space or even offset the cost possibly by building additional land that can be utilized for development, whether that be office space or, you know, residential or whatever the case may be. I think it's worth looking at. I think it's worth retaining and maybe even having something in the plan that says that Bothell will evaluate that and maybe do some basic cost analysis to see what could we, what would we get on, what would we get on the revenue side of having that additional land versus what would the cost be and how is that offset? That's kind of what I'd like to see on that one aspect of it, and I'll let other people comment on the other ones. Thank you.
Dave, just a, just an observation and a comment. The comp plan is a, my understanding is just a very high-level plan for the city for the next, you know, 10, 15, 20 years. To have the level of detail I think that we've got with figures UD2 through 5 and figures UD6 through 11, I think that, I think that either hinders development or, as you have, as you have stated, some of these things are just ignored altogether. So, my suggestion is we don't put that level of detail in the urban development section of this, and we eliminate some of these, some of these figures.
So, I asked Dave, I wanted to kind of delve into the exception process. It sounds like we've got these standards in place, but then there's ways that, for a particular project, that these standards can be alleviated or modified in some way. Give me a little bit more of how that works.
The process is one, it's called deviations. So, at least with public works projects, there is a process by which they can apply for deviations from certain standards and with justification. And generally, those are granted. Sometimes there's some negotiation mitigating the deviation if possible, but that's the process that is used.
I think what's behind my question on that is that whether we're talking about signs downtown or design standards on boulevards or for how an apartment complex should be designed, if the standard is too high and it hurts investment in our city, then it's not going to achieve a goal. At the same time, I tend to be one that does see value in this. I'm one who, when someone comes into Bothell, I want them to know that they're in Bothell. And I think in some places you know that, in other places you don't. You don't even know when Bothell begins and ends. And so, I do see some value to it, and if we can do that with, with kind of a light, a light touch, if you will, we can take what's happening. I mean, what's happening downtown is a reality in terms of the architectural work, lights, et cetera. And I'm not suggesting that we export the downtown design to our whole city. But I am saying, could there be a way that we take some of the touches of downtown and export that to the other welcome mats, if you will, so that there is a way that, and I think that this achieves a number of goals. I think one of them is it pulls our city together. We are unique in that we're in two counties, and there's this kind of north-south dynamic. But if we could, with a reasonably light touch, kind of utilize some of the design work that we have downtown to kind of pull our city together, I think that that's valuable not only from an emotional standpoint, but I think it would encourage additional investment. So, that would be something that I'd like to see us invest in. And so, the idea of boulevards being that, gosh, I like that, and I think that it even fits into kind of our transportation strategy. You know, the boulevard is one that's not only a boulevard for cars, but for pedestrians and bicycles and, but we want it to be aspirational, but we want it to be something that's achievable. So, I, just like Eric mentioned, this idea that this, this may take 10 years, 20 years, but it's aspirational for where our city's headed, I'm all for leaving it in the plan. If there are some of the drawings that are obsolete and it's just not going to happen, then let's take them out. But on the other hand, if it's valuable in terms of creating a picture for where the city's headed, I see value in leaving it there. Those are my only comments right now.
I'd like to provide a little clarification. The, our recommendation is to keep the boulevard system map, but to look at what, if this is the direction the commission wants us to go, to look at tweaking the actual development regulations that go along with that so that they're more realistic, they more fit in with what we're actually finding we're able to build on the ground. And then, also, one other thing on deviations, the deviation process is something that's available for road projects, but there isn't a deviation process for private development. The code is the code, the requirements are the requirements. Where there is some, more flexibility are in the application of the guidelines within the code, but there isn't a formal deviation process. There's a variance process, but that's very, the bar for that is very high. You have to demonstrate hardship that's outside of your making, and it's pretty rare that variances are granted because the bar is so high.
So, I'm in favor of keeping the boulevard map in the plan. I don't know if we want to take a motion on any of these questions, but just put me down as in favor of that. And, yeah, if we need to modify some of the other more detailed drawings about the particular welcome mats to our city to make it more realistic or doable and achievable, and like I said, a lighter touch that kind of encompasses some of the themes that we're doing downtown, then I'm supportive of that.
Thank you.
Patrick?
Yeah, I echo Steve's thoughts. I'm not, I wouldn't even propose that at this point we remove some of the images. I don't know that they're, they contain enough detail to prevent future development. I mean, some of the detailed writing that Eric referred to, maybe we tone back so that contractors can still have the ability to build what fits the particular piece of property. But we're talking about municipal projects for the most part in the boulevard descriptions. I know the apartments are more of a private entity, but I think it is good to have a vision of where we're headed. I don't want to throw something out there that we all know is not going to be achievable, but based on the timeframe of this plan, it's hard to project what can be possible, you know, 10, 20 years down the road. And like Eric, I like the idea of leaving the element about the 522 cap in the, in the plan, just the congestion caused with pedestrians going over to park at Bothell Landing. I mean, there's just going to be a lot of issues at that intersection, not that the cost or impact would be insignificant in trying to pull this off, but just a creative way to try to, try to approach our downtown plan, I think it would be nice to leave in the back figures.
I have just, real quick, I support staff on their recommendations, and I think that's referencing Eric's and Pat's, Patrick's, so, thanks.
Thanks. Just a couple of comments, David. Appreciate the presentation. It was really informative. In looking at the, in looking at the package that you provided, I guess, and you brought this up in your presentation, and I'm really glad that you did, it seemed as if this element of the plan was very goal and action limited and very policy-heavy. So, your question about going and addressing policies and maybe taking the opportunity to move those that need to be moved into where they better fit in code or other planning documents, more specific planning documents, I'm all in favor of that. Having said that, and following that theme of policy-heavy and goal and action-light, I think that there's also room to address several of the other comments that you made by increasing the number of goals that we have and adding some more specific actions that relate to, you know, entry mats to the community, lids on 522, the boulevard concept, all of those that I'm actually strongly in favor of continuing to pursue and have in the plan. I believe, however, that drawings tend to set expectations and tend to create more controversy, whereas well-crafted and open language with goals and policies can provide common ground that the city and development interests can work together to achieve and not, not start with a picture that sort of describes something. So, going with Eric's comments earlier, you know, the opportunity to let the folks that are really the experts at coming in and being the true partners that the city's going to need to affect some of these things and bringing their expertise and experience and talent on implementability and support the city's talent in doing, in doing community planning. I think my tendency is to try to minimize the amount of figures that we're using and then populate more goals and maybe populate more actions that would allow us to get those concepts into the, into the plan. One thing that I, I will say that I think is really, really important is that, just as Eric mentioned, and it goes to some of the comments that I provided on the, on the economic development strategy, the things that we want to achieve for urban design and the goals for the picturesque community that we state in our, in our vision, and moving into the future is going to definitely require partnership between private industry and the city of Bothell. And I think it's going to be very important that we have some goal, some policy language, and potentially even some specific actions that speak to this need for the city to be reaching out or partnering with or developing ways to work with private industry that's going to bring the type of money that's necessary. And also, supporting them by not necessarily piling on all of the responsibility for the urban design development, but urban design development, but, you know, creating that true public-private partnership that's going to be necessary to make some of these things happen in the future.
Thank you. So before we leave this slide, while I've got the questions in front of me, is there any, do you have any feedback on shifting second review of urban design and potential third review of economic development to June 18?
Any objections from folks on the commission? It sounds like we're all bobbleheading in the right direction there, so.
Okay. So I think we, just to memorialize that, I think it would be good to have a motion to continue this element review to that date, date certain, since we've already advertised the June 11 date.
So at this time, we'll look for a motion to continue the review of the urban design element until June 18.
Motion to continue the review of the urban design element of the Bothell Comprehensive Plan to June 18. Second?
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Note that it passes unanimously with commissioners present tonight. Thank you, David.
You're welcome. And before we move on to the economic development element, is there any interest in actually going through the urban design text before we move on at this point?
And other commissioners can pipe in here, but based on what I heard, there seems to be quite a bit of work that you'll be doing with that section over the next several weeks to bring it back to us on the 18th. And it may be, unless commissioners have something really pressing, I think it might be best for us to see that and review it in its new form before we comment.
Okay.
I would agree with that. I do have input on the text, but let's hold off until the 18th.
Thank you, Steve.
And again, I welcome any input, you know, via email in between. Will do.
So moving down the agenda, it's time for the second review of the economic development And I'll mention that I had a conversation with Mr. Boyd David earlier today. I had, our last review provided some general thoughts, and stated I'd be providing some specific comments. Circumstances didn't allow those to get to David in time for him to get them out tonight. So I have already requested of staff the opportunity to have one more review session of this element beyond tonight, and consider that when we get to deliberation and comment. But David, if you'd like to go through some of the work that you've done, that would be great.
Yeah. And we, as staff, we'd already pretty much accepted that there would need to be a third review, in all likelihood. So the changes that have been made since the first review on April 30 include incorporating the University of Washington Bothell comments into the text. Those are fairly minor tweaks. And I know Peter had some comments about putting some of that, or reinforcing that with some goal language upfront in the document, which we can certainly do. I made some modest changes based on the comments by commissioners at the April 30 hearing, including mention of enhanced business retention and recruitment strategies, public-private partnerships, a potential new neighborhood activity center at 228th and 45th, and new policies and actions for the Canyon Park subarea plan. And I didn't go too far in depth with those, pending seeing the other comments. And so I think there'll be more coming in the next review of that. And then, there did seem to be some support for the, what was called the Bothell Business Loop, but changed the name to the Bothell Circulator, since it's not just serving businesses. In fact, UW Bothell was one of the main supporters of keeping that in there as something to aspire to, at least. And we did add a little bit of language about implementation options. So it's not just putting this idea out there, but also some actions towards exploring that with businesses and transit agencies. So that's, in a nutshell, the changes that were included in the economic development element. And then, other recommendations by commissioners or members of the public are welcome, of course. So again, next steps, questions about the changes that have been made? If we want to have any further discussion about any other potential changes, we can do that tonight as well. One thing that came up, my question of my own, is whether there should be some additions related to marketing and branding of downtown Bothell, or the city in general. We really don't have anything on that, and I know that there was, has been some work done in that regard. If you would like, I do have the economic development text as modified, available to review, if you want to do a page-by-page review of that, or we could wait until we've got the more substantial changes incorporated for the next one. And then, any feedback on additional analysis or changes for the follow-up session on July 18 now? And then we've already continued the hearing, but I think just to make sure that we've done everything, performed, that we should have a final motion to continue the overall plan and periodic plan and code update hearing to June 7, or June 4.
Thank you, David. Thoughts from commissioners regarding the text modifications and the changes that David summarized tonight?
I have a question, and I hope my fellow commissioners can bear with me. I wasn't at the last meeting where the economic development element was discussed, so if I'm asking a question that was asked before, just bear with me. So I'm interested in probing a little bit on the regional activity centers. And so, it's more than just shopping. Is that what I'm, take me through what a regional activity center is? And apparently, we're looking at another one on 228th and 45th.
Well, no, 228th and 45th would be a neighborhood.
Oh, neighborhood, okay.
The most modest of the activity centers. The regional activity centers, the main difference between them and the others, besides scale, is that they are significant job centers. So whereas the other activity centers are more focused on retail and business and personal services, the regional activity centers, Canyon Park, Business Park, and North Creek Business Park, are significant employment centers.
Okay. So this idea of whether it's specialty, regional, or a neighborhood, just I just wanted to lend my strong support for this idea of exporting, if you will, or pushing out activity centers into our neighborhoods. And I know that finding land to do that is not an easy thing to do. But it not only reduces trips to stores, but it provides, again, options for citizens to walk to and to, again, have, I think it promotes kind of our overall theme of where we want our city to go.
Any other thoughts or questions regarding the information provided tonight? We'll have another chance to review with additional comments that have been provided on the next meeting on the 18th. So I will, I guess, first ask for a motion to continue the review of the economic development activity, or element of the comprehensive plan to June 18.
Motion to continue the review of the economic development element to June 18. Second?
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Note that the motion passes unanimously with those commissioners present tonight. And then it looks like the last order of business would be to continue the overall review of comprehensive plan updates to June 4. Is there a motion?
Motion to continue the hearing of the transportation element to June 4.
Actually, we did that.
Yeah, we've already done that.
We need to extend the continued public hearing on periodic plan and code update, all of them.
Oh, okay. So motion to continue the periodic plan update to June 4.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Note that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. No study session this evening. Old business.
You'll, having your packet, the periodic plan and code update elements for community services and historic preservation, these are not discussion items, it's for your records with incorporating the changes that were discussed at the last review.
Thank you, David. Reports from staff. Welcome, Gary.
Thank you, Peter. Evening, Commissioner. You've probably noticed by now that the schedule is changing a little bit, week by week. And that's not surprising. We've done a lot of work, we've got through a lot of stuff, we've still got a lot of stuff to get through. But we're at the point where, either because of staff resources, or commission's continuation of elements, the schedule is just changing from the work program calendar almost weekly. So I just want to let you know that's okay. We sort of anticipated that. And I wanted to just go through your June calendar just very briefly, because it has changed a little bit. You moved the urban design element to the 18th, along with economic development. And at least in this packet, the work program calendar is showing that you have the land use element coming to you for initial review on June 11. I've already moved that into the early part of July, because that material is simply taking me much longer to pull together than I'd anticipated when we pulled the schedule together back in January. So you now have a free evening, it looks like, on June 11? Wanted to point that out. Even though it'll be in your next packet, I wanted to point it out so that you weren't expecting to be here on the 11th. And in addition, because things are starting to bleed just a little bit, I anticipate that there may be some bleed over into September for some of the major plan element stuff. For example, transportation, land use, and possibly even housing. You might see some of those come back in September. That's okay, too. Don't worry too much about it. When we pulled the overall schedule together back in January, we sort of knew that would happen. We were trying to go with a best-case scenario and be as positive as possible when we pulled together the calendar. But we did anticipate this would happen, and I think we're still fine. So just to let you know, we did anticipate some of this slippage, and it's, I think it's okay.
Gary, can you remind us of your deadline, or the city's deadline regarding completion and approval of the revised plan?
Sure. We have to have the plan update adopted by July 30, or July 31, 2015.
Thank you.
Quick question, Gary. There's going to be a couple of updates for the city council of our status of our review. When is that going to take place? And is there any participation by the Planning Commission with the city council that you would like us to have?
Yeah, thanks, Steve. That's a good question. I don't recall exactly when we had those programmed in, but I'll take a look at the overall schedule and put a memo in your next packet so that you're aware of that. I think there were, I think there were two scheduled.
Yeah, I can recall that, too, that there were one kind of mid-year, and then maybe one more towards the end of the fall. But I guess I'd just like to know when this might be on the city council's agenda, and if there's any need for the Planning Commission to be represented there.
I'll put a memo in your next packet and let you know that information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Gary. Any reports from members? Congratulations to our newly-elected officers. And I'll hear a motion for adjournment.
I guess before we go to that, I'd like to just express my appreciation to our current chairman, Batuello, for a job well done, and just really appreciated your leadership.
Thank you. Move to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Thank you.